Couldn't call Mike Ringler, that's Heather Rockwell.
Kessler. Walters.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Ewer.
Here.
Benner. Harton.
Here.
Crum.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Nice indication we even by Pastor John Meadows of the Christian Chapel for Squirt Church.
Dear Lord, we thank you that you sent your best into this world. You sent your son to save us, to guide us and to lead us. And Lord, I pray that by your spirit, Lord, you be with the council and the mayor and the officials, Lord, as they make the best decisions for this community that we live in and love, the city of Hayesville. In Jesus' name I do pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start tonight's meeting, I have an item I'd like to add. Under other business, item G, activities, old activities center lease. Ms. Parton?
Make a motion. We have that division second.
I was second to add the old activities center to other business item G. Question? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Well then move on to presentation approval of minutes, A minutes of May 14, 2018. Ms. Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 14, 2018.
Second. I was second to approve minutes, May 14, 2018. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Abstain.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Abstain.
Item one says to be heard, A Cedric County Fire Department.
Hello, I am Lieutenant Torres with the Cedric County Fire District. And over the past month, we responded to 82 alarms in the city of Hayesville, three fires, 54 medicals and 25 service calls. To date, we are 90% complete with initial building inspections. And we have this new, well, it's not new, but we're promoting a ramp program. It's a rule address marking system. And our captain put it on the Hayesville Happenings page. So I brought a couple if you guys want to look at them. Basically, it's a free sign to hang on mailboxes for addresses with obstructed views from the street. Pretty much it.
Questions, anyone, for the fire department? Is that pretty much still standard in the numbers you're running? Or was that, it seems like it might've been down a little bit?
Yeah, it's been a slow month.
Okay, that's what I thought, it seems like a little down.
Which is okay.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you for coming and updating us. Thank you.
Thanks.
Item two, approval of licenses of bonds, we have none. Item three, introduction of ordinance and resolutions, we have none. Item four, no specifications, A government body announcements. Ms. Crum, Ms. Parton? Ms. Crum?
See, I like keeping them on its toes. The libraries, youngsters can get signed up for summer reading program. And also wanted to talk about on June 12th, at 6:00 PM, there will be a meeting at the library, Understanding Medicare, Parts A, B, C, and D, by Physicians Mutual. Kenneth Swart's going to be putting that on, and that's at the library on June 12th. And also at the library on June 5th is the next Horticulture Club meeting. And that's at 6:30, it runs from 6:30 to 8:00. And then the next Monday moving they have will be the Lego Batman movie, and that'll be on June 18th. And then the school district, I just wanted to point out that the boys' track team won regionals and placed third at state, 6A State, and the campus baseball team also placed third at state this year. So the athletics did really well this year. They won girls bowling, won state, boys soccer, won league, track, won league. I'll say I may be missing somebody else in there too, but the sports at the high school did really well this year. They finished out the spring season with two third-place finishes at state, so did really well.
I have the ones for the senior center. June 1st, 9 o'clock, day trip to the Eagle Valley Raptor Center, costs $5. June 4th, 12:30 planning meeting. June 5th, 9:00 AM, Connecting Communities. This is Regional Transit Study. June 6th, 12:30 Food Bank Bingo. And June 8th, 5:30, the birthday dinner picnic meeting. Seeing to others, we'll move on. And to item B, it's a flyer from the Connecting Communities Kansas regarding the Regional Transit Study. And item C, as member of the council regarding door-to-door licensing of sales. Item five, will business A KDHT project update?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The contractor being working on water line number 27 that we've been speaking about the last few weeks. They are expected to finish construction of this last water main in the next two to three weeks, weather permitting. We also got a new connection added to the connection list today. Working on getting that installed and good in service. Answering questions if you have any.
Ms. Crum?
I was just going to say, I actually was at a water policy meeting last week in Lawrence, and I ran into one of the guys that was in charge of the project that went on down here, and he complimented on how well the city got the work done and the way the system went real smooth. And he said they all, he wished they all went as well as this one down here has gone. So I was glad to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Item six, other business, A consideration, establishment of date for the public hearing and approval of statement of final cost assessment rules and notice of the public hearing. This is on the Orchard Acres and Dirk Street projects.
Good evening, Audible Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Brett Shover, George K. Baumann Company, Wichita Financial Advisor of the city. On April 10th of last year, the city issued general obligation temporary notes in the amount of $895,000 to finance paving improvements to the Orchard Acres area and Dirk Street. Those projects have been completed. Final costs were submitted to us by your chief administrative officer. The final cost for Orchard Acres improvements, not including the city's contribution for curb and gutter, is $538,895.92. That cost is spread over all 42 lots in that area, which equals an amount assessed to each lot of $12,830.86. The final cost for Dirk Street, not including the city's contribution for curb and gutter, is $290,124.73. That cost is spread over 23 lots, which is an amount assessed to each lot of $12,614.12. A brief timeline of events related to this specials process. The next step, which we'd call Phase One, and that starts with an action tonight. The city council approves statement of final costs, assessment rolls, and notices of public hearing, as well as establish a date for the public hearing. To meet our timeline, we're recommending a public hearing date of June 25th. On June 7th, the notice of public hearing will be mailed to property owners, along with the statement of costs proposed to be assessed. And the notice of public hearing is also published in your local paper, the Hayesville Sun Times. Second step, or we call Phase Two, starts with the city council conducting that public hearing at your meeting on June 25th. After that hearing's closed, you will subsequently pass a assessment ordinance. That assessment ordinance will be published in the local paper, and notice of assessment will be mailed out to those property owners on June 28th. And that starts a 30-day pay-in period for the property owners. In the meantime, George K. Baumann Company will size and structure a bond issue for the permanent financing. And the city will adopt a bond sale resolution at their regularly scheduled meeting on July 23rd. A few days after that, on July 30th, the pay-in period expires. And if there's any property owners who prepaid any of their assessments, we downsize the bond issue to account for those. And on August 6th, we'll distribute a preliminary official statement and notice of bond sale to potential bidders, and take bids on August 13th. And I would then come back to your meeting on that date and explain the sale results. And the council would consider adopting a bond issuance resolution and ordinance. The resulting bond and interest payments would then be spread to those property owners at Orchard Acres and Dirk Street. Plan closing on our current calendar is August 30th. This calendar has been carefully designed so that the specials could be included in the next tax period, beyond the next year's tax roll, and monies can begin being collected as notices go out in November, start to be collected in December, to start paying debt service on the bonds. Be happy to answer any questions about the process you might have.
Questions, council? Ms. Crum?
This is more of a process. Do we need to, when we make this motion, do we need a separate, do we need to accept the statement of final cost first, and then make another motion to set up the public hearing? Or can we do them both together?
I think, Josh, we can just do one motion, cover them all, can't we?
Just do one motion, or we need to just include it all in there?
Since it's all the same property and everything, I think we can just do one motion, cover them all.
The date we, the public hearing was June 25th?
June 25th, yes.
If there's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the statement of final cost for the assessment role and notice of a public hearing to be set for June 25th for the Project Orchard Acres and Project Dirk Street.
Second.
I was second to approve June 25th public hearing and final cost and assessment roles as presented. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to item B, consideration of Beer Garden for Independence Day Celebration. A, public hearing for the waiver of the district requirement for the sale of cereal malt beverages. So I need a motion to open a public hearing on the, Mr. Redmond?
I make a motion to open the hearing on the malt liquor.
Second.
I was second to open the public hearing on the distance requirement. Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Public hearing now open. Have the council had any outside contact regarding this matter? If so, please let us know who, what, and where and when. Seeing none, we'll go on then to our next item. Does the member of council have a conflict of interest in this? If you do, please let us know. Seeing none, we'll go on to the, if cities received any written or electronic communications? Haven't. And now we have opened the hearing to the public. If you'd like to speak on this, for against, come forward and state your name and address. Seeing none, any questions that the council would like to make? Mr. Crum?
Do we notice files at school?
Yeah, I contacted the administrative building today. I left a post message, pretty detailed for Dr. Trudy, let him know if he had any questions off to give me a call back.
Okay.
They just said he was in the meeting at the time.
Okay.
And also contacted West Hayesville Administration.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any motions then to close the public hearing? Mr. Redmond?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
I was second to close the public hearing on distance requirement. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
What would the council like to do with this distance requirement? Would you like to waive it?
I make a motion that we approve the waiver for the distance requirement for the sale of cereal malt beverage for the Independence Day celebration.
Second. I was second to approve the distance requirement, or waive the distance requirement for the cereal malt beverages. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item B, any other consideration in agreement with exclusive event services? Who will be the one that will be having the license for the event? So we would need approval of that agreement? Georgia, you have something to add?
No, just unless you have any questions for that or me.
Questions, Georgia would be happy to answer those for you. If not, we would need something done with this agreement. Ms. Crum?
Make a motion that we approve the agreement with exclusive event services for the Independence Day celebration.
Second.
I was second to approve the agreement with exclusive event service for Fourth of July celebration. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move subsection C, is consideration of temporary special events permit application for sale and consumption of cereal malt beverages on the premises. Ms. Crum?
Make a motion that we approve the temporary special event permit application for sale and consumption of cereal malt beverages on premises for Independence Day celebration.
Second.
I was second to approve the temporary special events permit. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to item C, which is now the consideration of Beer Garden for Fall Festival. I need a motion to again open a public hearing for distance requirement?
Thank you.
Mr. Redmond?
I make a motion to open public hearing for the malt liquor distance.
Second.
I was second to open public hearing for the distance requirement? Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Abstain.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Public hearing is now open. Council, any outside contact regarding this matter? If so, please let us know who you've spoken with and the nature of your conversation. Seeing none, will then have a conflict of interest in the council? If you do, please let us know what your conflict is.
I will abstain, as I'm part of the festival.
Okay. Have we received any written electronic communications? No. Anytime the public would like to speak now, you have five minutes, please come forward. Seeing none, council like to speak now, it's open to council. Ms. Crum?
Same question.
Same answer.
Thank you.
That is efficient government.
Seeing nothing else, we need a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Walters?
I motion that we close the public hearing for waiver of the distance requirement.
Second.
I was second to close the public hearing on the distance requirement? Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Abstain.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We need a motion then to waive the distance requirement? Ms. Crum?
Make a motion that we waive the distance requirement for the sale of cereal malt beverage for Fall Festival.
Second. I was second to approve the waiver of distance requirement? Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Abstain.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Item B, is a special event cereal malt beverage license with Hayesville Fall Festival. Ms. Crum?
Make a motion that we approve the special event cereal malt beverage license for the Hayesville Fall Festival, Inc. at Rigs Park for the Fall Festival.
Second.
I was second to approve the special event cereal malt beverage license? Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Abstain.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay.
One more.
Fall Festival Temporary Special Event Permit. Ms. Crum?
I make a motion that we approve the Hayesville Fall Festival Temporary Special Event Permit Application for Sale and Consumption of Cereal Malt Beverages on Premises for the Fall Festival.
Second.
I was second to approve the special, approval of the Fall Festival Temporary Special Event Permit Application. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Abstain.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
We're moving on. D, consideration bids for installation of fence at Public Works.
Good evening again. Before you tonight is three proposals from contractors to construct a perimeter fence around the south, southeast side of Public Works. There is a map in the package that outlines the area. This will be a six-foot tall chain link fence with barbed wire. This will close in the perimeter of Public Works 100%. Then also, due to the fluctuating price of steel, we did include a 5% contingency. I can answer any questions for you. Otherwise, I'm asking approval to accept the bid from Wichita Fence in the amount of $52,676.40, which does include the 5% contingency.
This will help, as we know, secure the public works better as what we had previously. Also, with the upcoming new dog park and soccer fields and everything, this also helps secure public works. So, Ms. Crum?
I was just looking how the, it's going to be split up between one, two, three, four different. Bruce, I guess I'm curious how we're taking it out of street equipment maintenance. Is that just because it's going to secure it?
Yeah. I mean, any equipment that's inside our yard is straight, water, wastewater, those departments as well.
Okay. Are any of those budgets screened right now? Okay. If there's no other question, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bid from Wichita Fence for $50,168, excuse me, not to exceed $52,676.40.
Second.
I was second to approve Wichita Fence, $52,676.40 not to exceed. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes. Thank you.
Item E, is consideration of temporary special event permit application. This one is for the community building.
Community building on June 8th this year, and party where they'd like to have consumption of alcoholic liquor and cereal malt beverage.
Ms. Parton?
Make a motion, we approve the temporary special event permit application for June 8th at the community building.
Second. I was second to approve the temporary special events permit application? Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
And move on to our next item, which is the first reading of the utility rate study. We put this in your pack and we're not, and the memo says we're not expecting you to do anything with it tonight, except for, so if you did have any questions, we can answer those for you tonight. If not, we'll have a full presentation and everything for you at our next meeting. So we would need a motion to table at this point till next meeting. Ms. Redmond?
I make a motion to table the reading of the utility rate study.
Second. I was second to table the utility rate study reading, first reading. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move on to item G, which is the commercial lease between Zero Six, Zero Sports LLC and the city of Hayesville. This is the 7106 South Broadway, which was our old activity center. The lease itself is pretty much a standard lease. We got it finished this afternoon. The people leasing want to make sure they can get started as quick as possible. We have they've got contractors already set up to go in and do the remodel they need to do. As you can see, this is something we've needed for a long time to help take care of what a lot of our youth are doing out there. This is going to truly provide a place for them. Now, one of the big things we know, we always hear is, we have no place we can go, we have no, nothing to do. This is truly going to take, take care of that. It's a one-year lease, so that they can see if they, how they can proceed after this. We have discussion that they may want to buy the building after the one-year lease at this point. Leases for $4,000 plus they'll reimburse us for the insurance. Other than that, it's a pretty standard lease that's there. They'll get the building now being used again, and hopefully things go well for them, and they will buy it from us after a year's time. Ms. Crum?
Kind of more for the people watching, the facility, they're talking, it's going to have, you can have parties there, but they're going to have batting cages, bazooka ball, outdoor bazooka ball, soccer, baseball, escape rooms, movie nights, murder mystery dinners, and related activities. So I take it they're probably going to break it up into some different areas?
Yeah, you can see some additions I'll be doing as far as breaking it up.
Yes.
There'll be a lot of things in for the youth to get involved.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, what would you like to do with the lease? Ms. Walters?
I motion that we approve the commercial lease agreement as written.
Second. I was second to approve the commercial lease agreement between City of Hayesville and Zero Six, Zero Sports LLC, doing business as O6O Sports. Question? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move on to item seven, Department of Sports, A Administrative Services, this is all.
I have nothing.
Item B, State Clerk.
I have nothing.
D, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll start off with our visiting officer this evening is Officer Miguel Gómez. He's currently assigned to our afternoon shift. So say hi to him as you go by out there. Also, wanted to let everybody know that we are having the Law Enforcement Special Olympics Torch Run, leg of it go through town tomorrow. It'll start at Hayesville West Middle School, so around 1:00 is when it'll start. So there may be some traffic delays on West Grand as we escort runners through city, so just be aware of that. The last thing that I have is a reminder on curfew, since we have kids out of school now. Just wanted to remind everybody about curfew for minors that are age 15 and under. They're not supposed to be out between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM, except on Fridays and Saturdays when those times are midnight to 6:00 AM. For the little bit older kids that are 16 and 17 years old, the hours are midnight to 6:00 AM that they can't be out. And on Fridays and Saturdays, that changes to 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. So I just wanted to let everybody know. If you do see anybody out, even if you think that they're not hurting anything at night, it's always good to call us, have us check them out. If it's kids, we'll take them home, let their parents know about the curfew and what the rules are and those kind of things. So it's always better to say something if you see something. So just let us come out and check them out. That's what we're here for. So, thank you.
Thank you. Item D, Department of Sports.
Hayesville Pride Citywide Cleanup for the West Side is this Saturday. This East Side is the following Saturday. And this does require a $20 permit that can be purchased at either the library or True Value. And also, volunteers are welcome. You can meet us for breakfast at 7:00 AM at the Masonic Lodge down on South Main. Also, the Valley Gutter at Sterns and Forest Street is being replaced currently. Just kind of be aware that there are workers out there. So, thank you.
Recreation, Georgia?
Evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to make up for others not saying anything, just so everybody knows. This Sunday, we have our youth triathlon. It will be at the Hayesville Pool, part of Sarah Lane. And around Rigs Park will be blocked off from about 7:15 to 9:00 AM. So we will be having people So we will be having people, will be able to go through, but you'll have to be escorted by police or volunteers, and just be aware of that. It's early Sunday morning. Secondly, we have Ballet in the Park coming up on Sunday, June 10th. They will be performing Little Mermaid, it'll be at 7:00 p.m. It is a free event. We have a swim meet on June 5th, that's a Tuesday, the pool will close at 4:00. We have soccer camp next week, basketball camp the week after. Registration is online at the Hayesville Rec. We're taking swim lessons, season passes, and pool rentals at the Activity Center. We have changed our whole process over there this year, so kind of be patient with us when moving everything, and the computer kind of trying to get up with the technology and everything. So I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia. Item eight, appointments. A, Dave Thompson, 425 Apple Lane, regarding appointment to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for a three-year term. Mr. Crum?
I make a motion that we have you appoint David Thompson for 425 Apple Lane, an appointment to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for a three-year term.
Second.
Motion second to approve Dave Thompson's appointment to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Hewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Move to item nine, opportunity of citizen to be heard. We have no citizens here, so we don't hear any of them.
They just left.
They all left. We approve their lease.
Okay.
Item 10, executive session. A, executive session regarding attorney trial privilege not to exceed 15 minutes to include attorney, Will, and the council. I don't think we need anybody else at this point. Ms. Harton?
I make a motion to go ahead and to executive session for not to exceed 15 minutes to include Will and the attorney.
Motion second to approve the executive session as presented, not to exceed 15 minutes to discuss lawsuit update. Discussion? Question?
Walters?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Hewer?
Yes.
Harton?
Yes.
Crum?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Moving back to order, no binding action was taken in the executive session, so we'll move on in, excuse me, into the agenda, which is item 11, bill to be paid, a bill to be paid for the last half of May. Ms. Hewer?[1580.83]